Becky? You up and going?
It is 9:00 AM. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. At about, at 9:15 or about 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, abiding by the Open Meetings Act. First item today is to open with prayer, and would you please join me? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy. Have us be ever mindful that this holiday week, how thankful we are for all of those blessings that we do enjoy. And the many safety, the safety that we enjoy as well as provided by our men and women in uniform in the military, those folks in law enforcement, and our first responders. Please keep those individuals in your protection. Look after this group as we meet today. Let us be mindful of the obligations we have to our constituents, and may we all enjoy a very happy Thanksgiving holiday. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. Next item in business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on November 13, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held November 13, 2023.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is to consider the following. First would be claims and treasures receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in regards to the claims and the treasures receipts. Any discussion?
Becky, the cable franchise fee, that's, that's the portion that, in the urban area, or the suburban area.
We get that quarterly now.
Is it quarterly?
Mm-hmm. We used to get that much about a whole year, but now we get that about quarterly.
That was my next question, huh?
Whenever, when we got that contract, we associated it with much more than county's favor.
Yeah, really? Nice.
Good job.
They probably passed it on us sooner, but.
Also take note of the high, the state of Nebraska highway allocation.
That's nice.
Deposit, that's a sizable amount, and the weed department's spraying assessment fees are good again this month.
Any other discussion regarding claims and treasures receipts?
Hubley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is to receive an order filed fee reports as submitted by the county sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to receive an order filed, the fee reports as submitted by the county sheriff. One in the amount of $5,189.45, and the other in, for the amount of $2,041.33.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Uller.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Kelly and her husband, Billings. I don't know his last name.
Quarter drive.
Yeah. Yeah, and they used to make it. They used to drive that, but they haven't in the last year or so because you can't drive it that far. That she doesn't believe that, yeah. Yeah, I can imagine. Drive him home in one day.
I approve of your new security measure out there, soldier standing drive.
They're carolers.
There's only one of them, and the other left.
Oh, and we have a nutcracker, I think.
That's.
That's the nutcrack, okay. The nutcracker. Yes. Morning, Alex.
We have a lot of cornstalks with, 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 with.
Thank you. I didn't even look.
There's a lot of corn.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, well, the dry land, just took an oath, yes.
Who uses it to do it?
Someone, yeah. They have days. They weren't real bad, but you could tell they were just a little uncomfortable. We put bicarbonate in the water and.
That'll help.
No, no, we should, Dick was thinking about putting some pink ranch or something down there, but I think that really takes their throats. Makes it so they don't want to drink water. We learned a hard lesson a long time ago, so we put them out for an hour and then bring back, then put them out for an hour and a half, and then bring them back. And then every, you know, every day a little longer.
That they'll, yeah, just get used to it.
Yeah. I like the notes that people give us. Not where I come from. Yeah, no, it's pretty common. Yeah, they do. St. Joseph's Indian School, they make that. Most of them don't have any show of thing. If you drive around, you have to call a bunch of places on the reservations to find that way. And a lot of people. Might be different when you get, like, to bigger cities and. Yeah, my teacher's, my sister's a teacher at St. Joseph's Indian School. Yeah. Yeah, sure, definitely. It feels way lower in here than 70. Some complaints that the thermostats don't seem accurate.
Demy, you can take your earmuffs off.
No.
You go, go into.
It's buttons, but it don't change.
Yeah. Go into some of the restrooms, it feels like a sauna, but it still says, you know, like 70 degrees. So efficient.
This is he always that rambunctious and noisy?
He's a good kid.
Good.
Once he's out on the football field, then he's not quite calm.
That's how you want it, though.
Takes that creep mother.
That's what Joe said.
You obviously don't know Ashley that well.
Okay, it is 9:15. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. First item on this agenda is to discuss and consider the following. First, approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on November 13, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes. The 11:13 meeting of the Board of Equalization.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion?
Weems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Good morning, Julie. I get a negative response on that, so we will move on to the next item, which is motor vehicle tax exemption applications as submitted by the county treasurer. Good morning.
Alex Curchula, Lincoln County Treasurer.
Looks like we have several of these.
Yes.
Or possibly.
Yes.
I'd like to first make a motion that we approve the application for exemption by the North Platte Opportunity Center for a Dodge Grand Caravan, it's a 2016. It's used for charitable purposes and recommended for approval by our Lincoln County Treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption by the American National Red Cross for a 2021 Chevy Malibu, four-door sedan. It will be used for charitable purposes, to transport supplies and staff to blood drives. It has also been approved by Lincoln County Treasurer Alex Curchula.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Uller.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Chairman, I submit a motion to approve application for exemption Form 457 for North Platte Hospital Corporation for a four-transit van, 21, 2021-year model, in addition of platinum brand 2005 utility trailer. Noted that they're both used for hospital use. Also would note that under state statute, it is allowed. Therefore, that is my motion to approve.
Second, that motion. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
I'm looking, and it seems that hospital sent the same application twice, is what I have.
It looks like the VIN numbers are the same.
Yes.
So we only have three instead of four, correct?
I need to, if you, someone could tell me the date that I approved it, so I know which one.
In my paper that I just motioned on.
Is it 11-3 or 11?
11-2.
11-2.
So what date did I approve it, though? I'm sorry.
11-3 on the.
11-9.
11-9 on the other.
11-3 and 11-9.
Yes, so which one did?
11-9.
Because we don't need to approve both, they're the same application.
So just void the, the one that's dated by you, 11-3.
Well, whichever one you aren't going to show up.
I think Kent did 11-9.
I did the 11-9.
Okay, so we don't need to do the 11-3, that's what I'm, thank you.
Okay, let's put those together, so they, that will begin to do there. Any other business that come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Hearing none. At 9:19, we will adjourn, or, yeah, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Next item on the Commissioner agenda is to discuss and consider setting a date to receive bids for the 2023 LCDOR 2023 asphalt overlay projects.
Morning, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. Morning. Morning. So this is just a, I guess our annual asphalt overlay program, bid date we'd like to set. So this is for the North Maxwell Road project, 11.2 miles, and looking to do a mill and overlay of that section. And we would be having that complete by the end of June, to be able to be in this fiscal year, to coincide with our budget.
Okay.
And like to set a date of the, of December 18th.
Is that good for you, Daniel?
Yeah, we were already, it's about 10:00 AM.
Perfect.
December 18th is what is being suggested at 10:00 AM. All rights.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to set December 18th at 10:00 AM to receive bids for the 2023 Lincoln County Department of Roads 2023 Asphalt Overlay Project on North Maxwell Road.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Jason, is, will this include that sliver going into that new?
No. Nope, this will be just our Lincoln County portion, so it doesn't have anything to do with that section that's the, that we had the agreement with on, with.
Dormy.
With dormy on, yeah.
Follow-up on that is the, you anticipate the heavy, a lot of the heavy traffic from construction is behind us when you do this overlay, or not sure of that?
I'm not sure of that, but I know there is, has been quite a bit of traffic out there, they're building a way out there, but I don't think they have nearly all the cottages built or anything, so there still is going to be pretty good traffic.
Just have to live with it.
Yep.
While we're having discussion, I don't, tell me what you're looking as far as what you're hoping to start construction when you put these things out for bid, what kind of a construction date are you thinking?
Probably in spring, April, May timeframe.
And do we know at that time where we're going to be regarding Kent's question, with heavy traffic over there?
I, I do not know where they're going to be at as far as their traffic goes, it's.
I, I would feel more comfortable personally if we could have that discussion before we actually have Tyler get into the dates for start and finish, because if we're going to put down a new road and put a bunch of heavy traffic over, I'm not sure maybe that's the best way to do that, I don't know.
It's my understanding they're wanting to open fall of next year, so I would imagine there's still going to be some heavy equipment going up and down for construction of buildings and stuff.
Maybe we could have that discussion with them, and if we need to put, oh, fall of next year? Oh, okay. So I, I think that's a discussion worth having, and maybe boarding back at least. I'm just a little concerned myself, is all.
They had some problems with seeding that had to be redone because of heavy rains in the spring, and it moved back from early summer.
Oh, I see.
To fall, is the last I heard, but I don't know about construction on.
We've just got to make sure that we get the road project done prior to the end of the fiscal year, otherwise we're going to end up in the same situation we ended up in this year. Correct. So, yeah, I guess I would like to.
Well, we might. We might. Because if it is, why could we, if, if we get into that kind of a problem, we can always go back and revisit that issue, and if there's another project that needs to move up from next year to this year, if in fact it's going to be a problem with the road, that's a discussion. So we don't end up in that same problem, because this was a miserable place to be this year.
I believe we tried that with the Antelope Road last year, and were advised.
That was.
Not to deviate.
Well, that's because we already accepted a bid.
Well, that's because we already accepted a bid on that road project. We hadn't put it out.
I didn't know if it was specific.
Well, I think the projects are specific to our lid limits, correct?
Right, right.
It is in the project, yes.
And I don't, I guess I don't see that there's going to be, by the time we get this project completed, early summer, sometime even if it's early June or sometime like that, that there's not going to be, they're opening in fall, there's not going to be a whole lot of months that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's not going to be a whole lot of months there before they open that we're going to have this completed, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, we have a motion and we did have a second, correct? Any other discussion regards to the North Maxwell eleven point two mile mill and overlay?
I, I have the same concerns, Joe, but I do not want to push this back to where we, same problem we had last year.
Yeah, lesson, lesson learned, I think.
I think we, we have to hope that there, a lot of the heavy equipment perhaps has been trafficked and done, and if they're, if they're anticipating that type of an open, I would think the big, you know, your big pile of breaker equipment, stuff like that's probably already parked.
Yeah, a lot of the heavy equipment work is going to be done and it's going to be just more or less residential building is what's going to be happening there.
We're going to have to move forward whether it is or not, you know.
Yep.
Potentially building materials and such.
And we're working with TC Engineering right now on getting some of the details worked out, and then as soon as we get that done, we'll get it over to Tyler for his review and comment on it before we finalize things.
Plus, we want to be in front of the line for contractors.
Absolutely.
If we let it early.
Okay, sounds great. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Willer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is discuss and consider setting a date to receive bids for a new tractor for the Lincoln County Department of Roads.
So this just fits into our acquisition list that we have in the budget for this year, so we would just like to set the tractor bid date, I'd request December eleventh.
About ten AM.
Ten AM, that works great. Jeremy?
And this was the tractor that would be used on moors and graders and road grooms and such, correct?
Yep. Yep, and this is going to be for the Hershey area.
Okay.
Hershey Sutherland area, I guess you could say.
Sounds great.
Jason, you've identified the horsepower you need and all that good stuff.
Um, pretty much, we're gonna, we're working through just a couple of the, a couple more things Brian and I are with tightening up our specs as far as what we're looking for, so might be a little bit less horsepower than the one we bought the previous year to maybe start our specs at, but then we'd be open to going up to that same size we have now as well, so.
He took, he took my question, but I was going to make the comment, not a question, so it's going to be a hundred plus horsepower, but now I'm just going to listen, what are we looking at?
We'll probably be looking at the low end of about a one fifty horse.
Thank you.
One fifty to one eighty, right in that range.
Okay.
Okay.
The one that we acquired earlier this year, or last year, has worked out pretty well for.
Yes, yep, very well.
Mowing and for the road grooms.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we've even recently put a, the construction disc behind it as well, just to see how it performs with that, and it's doing outstanding, so.
Nice.
As you know, you don't want to underpower it.
Yeah.
It'll cost you money in the long run, if you do.
That's why we were thinking of just bumping our specs. In the past, our specs have always been down, starting around that one thirty-five horsepower range, but I think we just need to bring that up, for this tractor anyway.
Thank you, because I misunderstood, I thought you were thinking about bumping the lower end down, so.
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
No. No, especially for this one where it's going to be their main.
Thank you.
Tractor for everything, this one does need to be in the upper range.
Instead of putting it out by horsepower, we ought to put about how much it weighs, so you get them heavy enough, you know, you're a big tractor.
Yeah.
Well, it'll last you a lot longer if you've got, if you're overpowered, pulling equipment with them.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to set December eleventh, ten AM, as a date to receive bids for the new link, new tractor for the Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Willer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, it is nine thirty. We have a report to the county board by District eleven probation. So let's have a third chair if we could.
I'm not standing up for you, Brian, but I'll show the ladies some respect. Appreciate that, Judge.
Okay, this, as you know, last Monday, they had the open house for the new offices for adult probation, and looked like that was a fairly successful event, and I was pleased to see what I saw there. And in our discussions that afternoon, I thought it might be important since, to have a report, since I hadn't heard from you for quite some time.
Well, thanks, Chair. My name's Lonnie Bolkert, I'm the Chief Probation Officer for District eleven probation, F O L C H E R T. This is Brian Flanders and Becky Hoagland. Brian's the supervisor for me and Becky's an officer in the new reporting center. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to come talk to you about the new building. So far, so good. I'd also like to thank Gordon Peterson, who leased the Evans Building to us for thirteen years, who was always willing to work with my staff and myself on things we needed for that facility. I'd like to thank the Lincoln County Commissioners for moving this project forward. In particular, I'd like to thank Commissioner Michaela Willer and Jerry Woodruff, who started the ball rolling about eighteen months ago, so getting it moving and coming and talking to Brian and I about our needs, I appreciate that. Commissioner Willer was the point person for this project. Her leadership and forward thinking was greatly appreciated by myself and my staff. She let us be involved in the construction meetings and also be part of the planning process for the needs of our officers in that facility, so I want to thank her for that. We'd also like to thank the Lincoln County grounds crew, Booker and his staff, they did the demolition of the building that needed to be demolished, some walls, some paneling, things like that. And they also helped us move our office equipment, copiers, printers, desks, which all belong to the county, from the Evans Building to the new reporting center on doing. So I'd like to thank that staff, they worked really hard. We did that all on June twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and Brian coordinated that move, so that was, not many hiccups there, it went pretty smooth, so that was good to have their help. The general contractors, architect, and all the subcontractors who worked on the building, thank them for their work over there. We did have some delays, but that was taken care of and we got, got moved in just before the project was completed, so on the thirtieth, there was still some stuff that needed to be done and we, we were able to move. Finally, I'd like to thank the probation staff, who painted the ceilings, painted the walls, and also did post-construction cleanup on that building. I don't know the dollar amount, what they saved the county, but they did save the county some money and funds by painting and doing some of that cleanup work, so I wanted to thank them. They all volunteered to do it and we had a good crew that helped. Michaela even came over and painted one day, so thank you for that help. In Lincoln County, we have four judges, two district court judges and two county court judges. They all support probation and utilize probation in this county. We have twenty-eight probation staff here in the building across the street and the building, the new building, the reporting center, so twenty-eight total state probation staff. Some of you may be asking, why the, why is the county involved with State and Nebraska employees? Well, in the late seventies, and Joe may be able to address this too, but I think seventy-eight, seventy-nine, but late seventies, the State of Nebraska came in and said to all the counties, take on the responsibility of the probation officers that you have, we'll pay salaries, benefits, and training. All you have to do as a county is provide those folks with office space and infrastructure to do their job, okay? So the last fiscal year, State of Nebraska paid those twenty-eight employees one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. In benefits, they paid four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, forty-two dollars, and in training, they paid thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. So this was a deal made years ago before my time and, and my staff's time to take care of probation needs in each county, and the State of Nebraska would pay those benefits. The responsibility, like I said, for offices, infrastructure, followed the counties. I have offices in Keith County, Red Willow County, Dawson County, and Lincoln County. Lincoln County is my primary county, you all see my bills come through, you guys are the payer of those bills. Each county pays part of my budget based off their census population. So my big four are Lincoln County, Dawson County, Keith County, and Red Willow County. They're four primary counties. The other counties are a lot smaller, so they pay less than my budget. So in Lincoln County, currently, we have approximately two hundred and seventy-five adults on probation at this time. So for an adult probation person to be on probation, it costs the taxpayers about twenty-five hundred dollars. For a high-risk person on probation, which would be somebody that's been through the court system, an assessment of they score higher, costs approximately thirty-five hundred dollars per year. We have Problem Solving Court in this county, Lincoln County, run by Judge Piccolo. For one person to participate in that program per year is four thousand dollars, and for a taxpayer to put someone in the penitentiary, it costs approximately forty-one thousand dollars a year to have someone in the penitentiary. So you see the cost benefit for having probation in your county and in this judicial district. So in closing, before I turn it over to Brian and Becky, when I first came to meet with you guys and gals, I presented some needs and I was told, Lonnie, I'm not going to give you the Taj Mahal. And I wasn't asking for the Taj Mahal. What I was asking for was a modest remodel of a building that needed efficient lighting, flooring, and paint, and that's exactly what we got, safe for our officers, safe for our staff, and that's going to be a productive building and location for probation for years to come. That building would probably outlive all of us in this room for the needs of probation. So in closing, I'd like to thank Brian and Becky for coming, and I'd like to thank your guys' support and Michaela, your support with this project. It was long overdue and it's a great resource for our staff. So Brian, I'll give it over to you.
Well, thanks for having us today to talk about probation, reporting center. So I just want to start, so Reporting Centers for the State of Nebraska Probation was started just to, to create a continuum, a central location for individuals that are in our communities. It provides them an opportunity to, I guess, to get services in a central location. And those, you know, it deals with individuals that are on probation in our communities, so we provide them, if they have needs of substance abuse, of cognitive thinking, cognitive behavioral restructuring, life skills, some education, employment needs, behavioral health. So we do quite a bit of, of services over through that reporting center. And some of the classes that we, that we provide, there's a crime victim empathy class, which provides, you know, individuals believe that they only have one victim, that's not the truth, our community's a victim. So it just provides that information, and we just, we just want to provide the services to, to the individuals in our community, so in hopes to reduce that risk of reoffending in our communities and hopefully becoming a taxpayer, paying taxpayer. So that's, that's our goal, to create community safety, to create accountability and rehabilitation for individuals on probation in our community. So we have, we have full, sixteen full-time staff in our building over there that include specialized probation officers, supervisors, assistant probation officers, substance use monitors, who do all of our drug testing, and, and clerical. So, and we also have three innovative, three officers coming from other offices to help with those case loads as well, and they come in two or three times a week. So we're, we're pretty busy over there. We, we probably see twenty-five to fifty people coming in for testing for UAs a day, so we are, we're, we're opening that door and providing the services. So it's, it's been a great, great asset for probation. I think it's a great asset for Lincoln County. So I just, I'm, I'm proud of the officers that we have over there. They, they provide quite a service to our communities. So that's, that's what I have, and I'll turn it over to Becky.
Well, I, I also would like to say thank you for the new building. As an officer who supervises individuals in our community, it's so much more efficient than what we had previously. I'm able to meet with up to ten clients in my office daily, where previously, when we were sharing with another officer, we might be able to see five, because we would have to stagger the appointments. And so we weren't able to offer the supervision that we can in the new building. I also really, really appreciate the three conference rooms, because even though our offices are bigger, sometimes our team meetings include up to eight individuals at a time. And so even though we may have classes running, we're still able to hold team meetings at the same time. The building, honestly, is so much prettier, thank you for that. The lighting is amazing over there, we, we never are straining to see anything, and it just, it allows for a much more, again, a much more efficient space. It's just, as officers, I've heard multiple people say, this is so much better. So, and we, we owe a lot of that to, to you and to the generosity of the council, so we, we just want to say as a collective, as officers, thank you so much.
Welcome. Well, thank you, all three of you, very much for your contributions as well. There was a lot of elbow grease by folks over there when I stopped by. There's a lot of elbow grease from your staff and you individuals as well, and we appreciate keeping the cost of that remodel as modest as we could, and I'm very proud of what you folks do. Eighteen months ago, I had very little idea what your office did. I guess I should be thankful for that, because I hadn't been in there. But I've learned a great deal about what you deal with and the challenges you have if everything goes fine, and when the facilities aren't conducive to what you need to do, it makes it even worse, so hats off to you folks for bringing that to our attention and for the efforts that you've made to have this be a department that will be very functionable, functionable for several years down the road. Thank you.
I do have one more thing. Two county judges came over and did the tour as well. Two district court judges weren't able to, but any of you who weren't able to make the tour on Monday, feel free to get ahold of Brian or I, come over anytime, we'll give you a tour of the building, it's, it's turned out pretty good, it's really good, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No, all we gotta do is keep the pigeons over, right?
I, yeah, right, you remember that, don't you? Yeah, hopefully we won't have that issue, Joe. Don't jinx us. You can fill in the board about that story, I'll, I'll.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, ahead of lady. Okay, Tyler, is there need for closed session? That's good to hear. Okay, next item is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representative. Becky, do you have anything, Paul?
I do. I put letters in your packets. We did get the official notice from the State Auditor's Office that they will no longer be doing our county audit. This was the last year on our contract. They're switching over to more state-level work and not doing the counties, so I have been talking with Candace at NACO. We are not the only one, all the counties they did are, from my knowledge, also being dropped. So Candace had given us a list of some ideas. The State Auditor's had also sent a list of some, of who does the county audits for other counties now, so I guess I would strongly urge the board that we need to start looking sooner than later. later. For a different auditor.
Yeah, and we do have a list of all the counties and who they do employ as an auditor, correct?
Correct. Now, some of those on the list do not do federal audits.
That's what I was gonna say. It's very confusing because you can take 50% of them and scratch off on one name that don't do it. You can scratch off about another 30% on the second name of the firms that don't do it. Beyond that, I don't know. But like I said, we do have at least one local person. And if it's okay with this board, I would at least like to approach him and see if he has any interest or that firm has any interest. We can put this out later to an IRQ or whatever we decide to do.
Would it be appropriate to ask you who that individual is?
Oh, it's Bob, does our region two audits.
Meyer. Is it RJ Meyer?
Yeah, RJ Meyer. Bob, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I would certainly be for that inquiry. We've got to get started quick.
Probably sooner than later.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is with the ARC money, the smaller counties would not normally have federal audits, but many of them will be having federal audits for several years now. So that's...
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. That firm does agency on aging as well.
They do the visitor here as well.
But yeah, Joe, I would be in favor of you reaching out. So, because we don't want to be at the back of the line.
Yeah, right, right. Out in front of this one. Okay. You will make that inquiry, Joe?
Sure, we'll do it today.
Okay. Becky, anything else we need to do on that right now?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we were focused on that.
Okay, super, super. Okay, we'll keep that item open in case we have elected officials or department heads that wish to come speak. Next would be Lincoln County Commissioners Committee reports. And since we started to my right last week, we'll start one of this week.
Nothing to report.
Well, Joe and I had an ad hoc, we had a conversation about the resource officer.
Okay. And why did you come up with it?
Well, a very sincere, heartfelt discussion with a couple of school officials, a school board member, one being a school board member, right, Joe? And one being the belief high school principal. And Lieutenant Newton and the sheriff. We impressed upon those folks that we sincerely understand the value. We simply have a manpower challenge that the sheriff can't seem to get past because same problem everybody else has, can't find quite people. So the discussion kind of evolved into, you know, the limited resources that we have at hand. And a lot of emphasis on what happens when the money runs out from the federal funding, which is quite honestly not going to pay all the bills. And they know that. So we asked directly if we could get some feedback on a little harder numbers on what out-of-pocket it would be from the county, the sheriff's office in particular, and the front end of this, and then some extrapolated numbers on the backside of this when the inevitable funding is going to go away. If we were to move forward with this grant application, I'm gonna let Joe come in here and fill in the blanks where I've forgotten. But the one thing that I emphasized, we both emphasized pretty strongly, was we need, we would like to have a little more feedback and, I guess, the acknowledgement of commitment from the school district itself and other districts that may be having interest. Because as we pointed out, at the end of the day, it's always, it's tax money, and we've got a limited amount of tax dollars. So down the road, in three years, if you get the grant and everything moves forward and the sheriff somehow finds a candidate that fits that particular job, maybe not necessarily from his rank and file, but perhaps somebody that's not in the existing pool that would apply, we need to know how committed the districts are to this as far as funding because it's all going to come down to, you know, there's going to be words bandied about like critical, crucial, essential, when we're talking budgets, and we're the bad people because we don't fund it. And that's real. That's the reality of it. So they understand that. I think they're sincerely appreciative of that. And so we just kind of agreed to get together again tomorrow and kind of go over numbers and see where we're both at, if they can give us a little bit more detail as far as extrapolated costs as they see them. And Lieutenant Newton has been putting a lot of time in this, as well as Sergeant Hannah. So we'll see what they have to say tomorrow. The sheriff equally recognizes the value, but again, it's a manpower challenge and it's a budget, gonna be a budget challenge down the road. So Joe, is it your impression that perhaps at the end of the day, the sheriff is willing to allow the application process or would endorse the application process, I should say?
Well...
Because it gives them the time to see if they can make it work, and if they can't, they can...
We have received the grant. It's, we've accepted. So we have been awarded the grant. I think that the sheriff indicated that he would be willing on the next advertisement to advertise for two deputies and perhaps a resource officer. There's a lot of things that happen internally when it comes to merit condition, where do you put different people, do you hire somebody from the outside, things that are outside of this board's control, but that put a lot of pressure on the sheriff, okay, running that department. We also have to remember that it entails a new vehicle, equipping that vehicle, radios, all of those kinds of things, which is a cost that nobody, well, that's not true, that I'm not sure the school district necessarily looked at. So I think Ken's point is right on. I think that it would be nice to provide that service. I made the statement, I think, a couple of weeks ago, that I feel our main concern is to fight the best law enforcement we can for Lincoln County. Probably rightly so, the principal mentioned that they're a part of Lincoln County, but I mean to Lincoln County as a body as a whole. And I would, just like Ken, would like to get a little bit better handle on the cost because if something does happen, and I've seen so many federal programs come and go for two or three years, and just as what he mentions, when the dollars run out, you know, some of these grants and stuff, we're right back down to that hard decision. What was something that was never in the school before almost becomes so critical that we're gonna be, you know, you just have to have that program. Look what they've done. And so it's, I continue to listen with open ears, as I think Ken does. And I think that we're gonna have another meeting, maybe do our homework, and sometime we'll be able to come back with a recommendation.
Super, super. Continue your work on that. I think it's very important that we discover what is feasible to be done and what is not feasible.
Well, they, you know, they know, as we all know very well, that the two taxing entities within the county are the school boards, school districts, and the county board. So there's, you know, it's always critical eye on where those funds are expended, and rightfully so. But Joe just commented, you know, it becomes an essential thing, and perhaps it is, but it's still gotta be funded somehow.
Yeah, exactly. We'll continue your work on that, and we'll look forward to further updates. Any other committees need to report?
I looked into, I was asked to check on, we had on our agenda last week, the emergency management building topic. I, we had applied for a lot split quite a while ago, and so I followed up with that with Judy Clark. And she said the lot split survey has not been completed yet. They are waiting on that and that she cannot issue a building permit for the project until that lot survey is completed. So she was gonna follow up with Bonnie Edwards to get moving on that. She said Brandon could go ahead and apply for the building permit, but it can't be issued until that step is completed.
I wonder what's holding up the lot split?
Just the survey getting there.
Okay.
So Judy was gonna take care of that for us.
Perfect.
Also, I was invited, maybe we were all invited, but I attended a presentation that was a collaboration between the Ark Sarben Foundation out of Omaha teammates and a new project that they call, label Intern Nebraska. One of the first things I learned in the meeting is county governments, governments, period, do not qualify to participate. But we did learn a lot. The Ark Sarben Foundation has set aside millions of dollars to promote internships and mentoring in the state of Nebraska. They will provide up to $7,500 in wage reimbursement, housing reimbursement, mileage reimbursement, meal reimbursement. And they said one of their areas that they identified that they really want to send some money to is Western Nebraska. And the representative from the Ark Sarben Foundation said their biggest fear is they're not gonna get a lot of applicants, and they won't be able to utilize all of this funding that was set aside. So I have partnered with them in the position of promoting and going into our outlying communities here and having conversations with the businesses, the chambers, the village boards, any way we can spread this information and get people to apply for this partnership. I think it's a great way, especially to help the startup companies that we have coming into our area, get employees with foot in the door, mentor to them, and maybe help them get some short-term certifications going. So I will be talking to that periodically and letting you know what kind of feedback I'm getting from the, from our communities.
Thanks, super. Super.
Also, we did have a short meeting with the group that has been helping me with our voucher program that we applied for the grant funding for weatherization updates in county buildings. And Kevin from the city office has just done so much work digging in to all the details. And he did discover that in order to move forward before we submit our plan, that we will probably need to pass a resolution showing an agreed support around this table. So Tyler, Judy, and I will be getting together with you to put that together, and it'll probably be on next week's agenda.
Sure. Okay. We will remain in session while we work through these claims. Jason, anything else from you?
No.
I would imagine just a little bit of moisture might be helpful on the road.
Yeah. Do you guys have what the final cost of the probation project was between ARC money and county remodeling money?
I'll bet you I know somebody that has the exact thing to the penny. I would guess, but I don't know that.
I do have the direct to the penny amount, but not with me.
Did you text me your email?
I can, yes. I can. We spent $325,000 on the purchase and a similar amount on the total remodel.
Okay, great. It doesn't sound right.
The building was $250,000.
Yeah, it was in the twos.
What's that? Oh, $254,000. You're right. So, thank you for correcting me on that. $254,000 and I think $325,000 was the remodel amount.
Yeah, and it was ARC money for the purchase of the building.
For all of it.
For all of it, okay, good.
Yes, no, no local taxpayer money. It was all ARC.
Can you just confirm that for me if there's a need to repeat that?
Okay.
Have a good holiday, everybody.
You too.
You too, Todd.
$83,000 property tax, too.
Thanksgiving, everybody.
You bet.
You as well, sir.
Jason.
Are you guys working Thanksgiving, Jason?
What's that?
You guys are working Thanksgiving?
If it's snowing, yes.
Oh, okay.
So I guess I'm making a mistake.
Good answer.
No snow on Thanksgiving.
I thought there might be a chance.
Also, maybe you had a conversation with Brandon, too, but he reached out to me, and I encouraged him to get time and material, rough cord on the electrical side.
Electrical, he did reach out to me and said that he had had a conversation with you for clarification on that.
Taken kind of the same approach, I think, just, you know, we could find a 200-amp panel would be sufficient, what he would need. And again, because he would recognize, you know, what he needs for receptacles and lighting, I asked him to just identify that, specify that, so that he's comparing apples to apples for time and material or, you know. And if the numbers, something underneath our formal bidding requirements, then I guess we can consider them at that point.
That's a lot of dirty laundry.
15 gallons.
Is our meeting at nine in the morning, Joe, or ten?
Nine, I think. Same.
I think it's at nine, yeah. Put it in my phone at 10, but I don't think that's correct. I think it's at nine.
See, I had an 11, so I think it was nine because I think I went to give plenty of time.
I think it was nine. That's what we learned last week.
I think he had to wind up there.
Should be great.
Yeah. On that matter, is that something that the individual communities...
Oh, God, Tammy, it's 64 degrees in here.
No, it is not.
No way. I'm so cold.
Are you starting some trouble over there?
I'm trying to. You notice this guy's aren't saying anything.
My reason to go into the village board is I figure they know in the community who could utilize the prob...
Their government agency too. I was really disappointed when she said that governments can't participate.
I'm comfortable, I'm not cold.
So like the new, the new story that opened up on East Door Street, it would be a great way to integrate an employee and mentor to them and teach them.
The reason, the reason I ask is... Yeah, some people used to be really spoiled with having heat come out down below them from the floor.
Is hiring or has, who, who has opportunity in the community, but schools can use it, uh, sheriffs. There is a difference. We, we had a heat pump at home and when they installed it, they said that they do get people reporting like hot and cold spots in the homes. And then when that wore out and needed replaced, we just went back to a regular unit and it's...
Now you, now you can stand right on that thing or... Why don't you put it in the old floor furnace, I mean, if you want that.
No, thank you. I live in a hundred-year-old house. It didn't even have heat, I mean, it, we had a warm warning stove in one room of the house that heated the whole house.
You know, what I'm trying to think is, you know, when we had, we used to have a floor furnace and that grate would get so hot. Why did the old day... I remember as a little kid going across there and having little checkers on my feet.
Yep.
Melting shoes.
Nope, my red bull.
You learn pretty quick as a kid to avoid.
You go around it. Can remember when we moved a block away, we moved uptown, it was really fancy because we had furnace that had, uh, thing coming out of the side of the wall, you know, big old things that they used to get. Rooster furnace.
Has anybody ever used a vent-free propane heat source?
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're pretty safe.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they've got...
Yeah, ventless, vent-free.
They're real common.
Are they?
Yeah, and they're very safe. They've got sensors on them to shut down. We've got one in, uh, well, we've got a ventless fireplace.
And you don't ever have like any odor or...
No. No, it's a propane tank as well, but you have that off your cook stove.
Right, true. Son lives in a house with nothing but electric baseboard heaters and so, yeah.
Expensive.
Expensive.
They are expensive.
And so I found a little vent-free, freestanding propane stove.
We put one in our garage, nerded it into a... Little table out there years, a few, a few years ago. We put one on the wall. The only thing I'll caution you about is the safety factor was, you know, they... The instruction manager says that you could mount it on drywall.
Yeah.
Now, cement board.
It gets hot.
I just put cement board behind it and then I gapped it about that far. As we first lit it up and that wall, I thought that thing was gonna just take off. It's so hot in there.
Yeah, that would bother me.
Scared me to death.
Yeah, that would bother me.
Because we have a hundred-year-old house too and it'd take about two minutes to burn it down. So I shut that down and re, overhauled the mounting brackets. Created my own, actually.
Dick has had a, a vent-free, uh, wall mounted unit in his shop, in the little heated part of his shop for years. But the shop's not insulated real well or airtight, so, you know, you get some ventilation through there.
Just like the big propane blowers I got out in the shop.
Those have a vent.
They, they have a flue, they have a...
No, I mean, mine does, it's portable.
Oh, you mean like a, like a...
Yeah, just a construction.
Like a warm morning heater that infrared that, yeah. They burn very efficiently. So, yeah, you're right. But they also have sensors on them.
Oh, for the propane smell, you mean?
Well, for, uh, lack of oxygen, I don't know what kind of a...
Oh, I didn't know that.
Like carbon monoxide, is that...
That's built right into the deal. I didn't even know that.
Well, I normally do because, you know, we looked at them for quite a while before we bought one. But that, that was concerned, what was that, Todd? Yeah. It might be a little leak in.
Yeah.
So we've had a lot of concern about that as well. You know, like your cook stove, you don't leave it on like you do at...
They tell you if you're in a power outage that you shouldn't try to heat your house with your cook stove, you know, by turning it on and opening the door because of ventilation issues. I just didn't know if the little freestanding unit I bought would be safe to you because it's, it's, he does have a vent there.
It should, it should tell you in the brochure of the owner's documents, whatever car you buy should tell you if it's got the safety features or not, or the thing.
Yeah, I think it does. And then I, I read a lot of the...
It would probably be smart to have a carbon monoxide alarm.
We do.
Along with it, which we do. That way you're not a hundred percent reliant on that. Those things, when they go on, they'll wake you up.
Well, and I also read a lot of consumer reviews and, you know, like people that have cabins up in the mountains, that's their sole source of heat.
Right.
And it's vent-free, so they must be fairly safe.
There'd be a whole lot of lawsuits going on if they weren't. Might be out of business. Like the old gas, uh, refrigerators.
He's been using it ever since Jason, ever since Jason shared it with him.
Okay, good.
So I can, I can ask him to email it to us if he wanna review it.
No, no, I just wanna make sure he's, uh, reporting it because it certainly, uh... And, uh, I assume the same out at, at Weed Department?
Yes, Jason shared it with Weed's Building and Grounds and then formulated it for Rhodes.
I suppose Becky owned, when we took a very large rebate that the auditor brought up, spreadsheet to report all that information. Should we have that all come in to a central spot to review? Or how do you suggest that we do that to satisfy the auditor's request?
So this, this was brought up last year and I think, yeah. Chris had asked me to work with, because I'm on the three departments that use Menards a lot. And so Jason developed a spreadsheet and, for tracking purposes and reporting purposes and shared it last year with Jeff Higgins and Booker is using it and with Todd over at Weed.
Are you talking about taxes or what?
No, the rebates. We have to be able to...
I'm sorry.
To prove... Well, and they're available. If anybody wants to see the spreadsheet, I can just request them to send it to anybody.
And that would be something that they'd be available to the auditors?
Well, maybe like every six months or every year, especially to audit, we can have that sheet complemented with the audit. That would be very helpful because I don't know.
Bring that up.
I will take care of it.
From all the departments then, because I'll use it for Predator too.
We suppose if we had that come in on...
They go to Menards.
Quarterly or biannually, maybe, is often enough possibly? What do you guys have to go up there?
Maybe over six months, just so we don't, you know, we're too far behind on them.
Just email Jason and he'll, he'll share his...
I have it.
Oh, you have it already, okay, very good.
We have a refund for peaks that I need to deposit the treasurer, but they made the check out to the commissioners. I'm just gonna do it to ourselves and make it to the treasurer.
Okay. Joe?
It already says pay with Lincoln County Treasurer, so you're on lock soon.
So what, do I need to endorse it?
Yeah, just, Jerry would drop it, Jerry, I would.
Boy, it's nice to have a light of candle, huh?
Yes.
We had one coming.
We didn't need it.
I'm gonna make a call on this one and I don't wanna tie up the line.
Okay. So that would be for the very north part of the building.
I was gonna say they got three meters over there.
Right, yeah. Here's for the other two.
Yeah, Brandon, Joe, I'm in the commissioner's meeting, sign in for claim if you could give back. Next.
I'll be, I mean, we had very mild temperatures last month, so it'll be interesting to see what it does when, but I, you know.
January.
Yeah. I think, all in all, it was pretty well built and needs...
Oh, never mind. I already have Brandon to this individuals, I just didn't read it. This is a grant thing, never mind.
Okay.
So, I'll sign it.
Want some of these back?
For me?
You want some of those back?
Yeah, I'll take them.
Yikes.
I didn't read that, but I just read. I just didn't wanna be paying the fire department out of our budget.
I wonder how often that happens that they have to replace them.
They're too expensive, aren't they?
Exploration on them.
I would imagine they're probably made of... Ex and plastic, so...
Well, it's like your safety bunker gear stuff that the manufacturers are the ones that lobbied for the exploration so they could sell...
Sure, yeah.
And the National NACO, one of their subcommittees was spearheading an effort to abolish that.
Chris is getting nervous. You read, you read too much.
Hey, sorry.
I'm sorry. You're not getting nervous, Chris.
You can, you can file a complaint with my boss.
All right.
I'm looking for something specific, so...
Oh, okay. Well, I may. I don't discriminate against any of them, I just... Who uses black?
Yeah, that's Jason. Some of our outline buildings.
Stuff like this, it really, really adds up.
Does it say on there? Probably Brady.
See, but it...
What you got, Joe? Yeah.
I think Flat Hills Energy starts eastern.
Address two-hundred-one, text first sheet.
Over to jail.
Oh, good.
One of our vendors told him after they worked on it extensively, said, "Uh, shot. There's a estimate sixty grand." I told him to go call another contractor. I wired the loover control backwards.
And they had worked, the company A had worked on it multiple times.
Company B. Lot right off.
These are company B. Are you telling them to jail?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no set.
Boiler? Are you in the know about that?
No, but I'm pissed off. I'm sorry, I can't know, but I've read some numbers on some costs.
Last...
Oh, okay.
Okay.
They found the, what was wrong?
They what?
The other company we consulted found the problem and they went, "Oh."
And fixed it, like in thirty minutes? Because it was wired backwards. And they said there was nothing else that could be done, that it was shot and it was gonna cost us sixty-eight thousand dollars to replace it.
When, when you don't know, that's what happens. You know, when you have young guys, they don't even know what a boiler is. We used to have, back when we had a lot of boilers, there were three or four really good technicians right into our plant.
Well, kudos to Booker for recognizing that we needed a second opinion and, and bringing the issue to me and Cam.
Well, he wasn't gonna bring it, or I was too. I wouldn't either.
No. One of the few times he's ever texted me on the weekend, so I could tell he was, he was nervous about it. But he did the right thing.
So if I wanted to, to claim some of these rewards, how do I, do I have to sign it?
No, so, you know how to, I can educate you, I do it all the time. We can send you a spreadsheet on that.
No, that can't.
That's probably the cheapest asphalt bill I have ever seen in my whole life.
So what, what do we...
I have to do some more.
Do... It used to just go into the general thing. Do we take it out in the form of...
Yes.
So it comes as a form of a postcard, and you have to use it back at Menards.
The weather's changed and...
And so you have a postcard that says a hundred dollars, if that's what your rebate amount is, and then at checkout, you present the postcard, they scan it, and it gives you your rebate, applied to your new purchase like cash.
And so we just... I'm surprised that that's going to...
The mod is there, it's only one, as soon as they go together.
Correct. So whenever they do... Jason developed a spreadsheet last year. Whenever they purchase something, I think Menards and Ace Hardware both do rebates, you click the little rebate... Seat off the individual receipt, he records that, they send it in, and then when the postcard arrives, he marks that it's been received by the department.
Of course, it doesn't think much of a couple thousand dollars.
Then when they use the rebate, he records that, so... I think when we went to one of our NACO meetings, they said that there was...
Yes.
He'll straighten it out.
Concern.
Yeah.
In some counties that they weren't being tracked properly, and there was concerns that people were using them personally. But ours were not, and now we can prove it.
Never ten grand, because it's like, turn in those kind of claims, and you just go up and pay for it anyway.
Here's the claim from Dow Howers that Lee Davies presented to us on the change order request, and this is the final...
Final, final?
The final, final invoice for the probation project.
The thing is, all that stuff you do would come through the...
Suzanne, the classmate taking those photos, is that her or for some other reason?
Just on her.
For showing me.
Yeah, there's another...
No, that was my whole thing, I was thinking one should be coming through.
Did you send those off in the email?
I guess Lincoln Avenue, pretty nice for that.
Oh.
Oh, goodness gracious.
I don't see an attachment.
Becky, I don't... Visual... Vision insurance? Should we have received a card or... I've got nothing on that.
No.
You're just looking at it by yourself, so you have your...
Okay.
Provider.
Print it out. I was... Such a thing as too much insurance, because UPS still gives me vision, and then I get the vision through the county, and you have to de... You have to determine, you know, which one's the primary, and it picks up any out-of-pocket, but it gets... It's complicated.
See, because my understanding was from that construction...
County, because I actively work for them, and then... And then UPS picks up the... Yeah, it is nice. I have always said I'm very blessed on the benefit report.
Because that'd be a huge savings, right? That's what I understood from Mr. Perret.
Sending them back around again, or... Pretty good pile.
It was a pretty good pile, Cheryl, I think.
We blame Cheryl, is that what we're...
Yes, yes.
Whom we're blaming? That's whom we are blaming?
Blaming all the attorneys, most of them are attorneys.
No kidding.
It's been all the time going through.
I thought if you had that much investment in it, you might want to sign it. I think they said they're closing for remodel already. They seem like they're brand-new, but they were closing for, uh, temporary closing for remodel.
Just like the another round is.
Another round also, yes. Also, I was out at the airport last week and heard that somebody has put in a, offered to lease the restaurant.
Really? I noticed they've been asking.
A young man who grew up in North Platte, who moved away and became a chef, and wants to reinvest in his community, so... Very nice. I've put an offer in on leasing the restaurant at the airport.
Who's doing the...
Yeah. We miss... We miss going there.
A lot of people do.
Yeah. They said they still get carloads of people who don't realize it's closed, so... They did a nice job on the remodel, too.
Is that the end of the, uh, things?
That is done.
Great. Anything else to come before the board? Do you have anything, Tammy? Tyler?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, yes. Good turkey day.
I'll tell you what, over there.